October 1st meeting of the Lake Forest City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Honorable James Cowie.
Here.
Alden Novit.
Here.
Alden Waldeck.
Here.
Alden Moore.
Here.
Alden Panleón.
Here.
Alden Schonhaider.
Here.
Alden Tac.
Here.
Alden Palmer.
Here.
Alden Edelman.
Here.
I am President here after Mr. Mayor of the form.
Thank you, Birdy. Will you please join me in a pledge allegiance? A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our first order of business this evening is reports of city officers, the first being comments by mayor. And I'm pleased to announce this evening that we do have a number of new personnel joining the city and some promotions as well. So we will go through the following. First, though, I'd like to read a resolution for an individual who is retiring after thirty years of service. That resolution is for Glenn Burmeister. And I understand, Glenn, you're here, and there he is, and your wife Pam as well. And we'd like to welcome you. And I'd like to read the resolution into the record. Whereas Glenn Burmeister has been a dedicated employee of the city of Lake Forest since October 1, 1982, whereas Glenn honorably retired from the city on October 4, 2012, whereas Glenn Burmeister served in the following positions during his dedicated career. Police officer, 1982; motorcycle officer, 1983; field training officer, 1986; police sergeant, October 11, 1987; field training officer supervisor, DUI program and grant writer; police sergeant in charge, September 17, 1999; police commander, April 20, 2001, patrol division accreditation manager, investigations and youth commander; deputy chief of police, January 7, 2007, which included support services responsible for personnel, investigations and youth records, community service officers; budget and training. He also served in the Lake County Chiefs of Police Training Committee, was a governing board member for our Community Speak Up Prevention Coalition, and represented the city on the Community Wellness Task Force. Whereas during his career with the city, Glenn Burmeister accomplished the following: three Lake Forest Police Department Honorable Mention Awards, one department accommodation award, hundreds of hours of continuing education courses, most notably the Traffic Institute, Supervision of Police Personnel at Northwestern University, the Southern Police Institute, Administrative Officers Course, University of Louisville, Executive Management Course, Northwestern University, and a Senior Management Leadership Program at Northwestern University. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Lake Forest that the council, on behalf of the administration and residents of the community, hereby expresses its appreciation and gratitude to Glenn Burmeister for his public service faithfully performed. And be it further resolved that the city clerk be and hereby is instructed to deliver a copy of this resolution duly signed by the mayor to Glenn Burmeister this first day of October 2012. Glenn, congratulations on thirty wonderful years at the city. We're certainly going to miss you, and we know you're going to enjoy your days of happy peace in retirement, but we thank you for everything you've done for us. And I'd love to present this to you, and we certainly want to hear some words from you as well.
Motion.
Motion. Motion to adopt the resolution.
There you go.
The mayor asked for me to say a few words, and one thing I've learned after thirty years of service is keep your comments short when the Bears are playing on Monday Night Football.
The next items on the agenda are, we have two individuals up for promotion in the police department. I'd like to see Chief Jim Halt, if you'd come on up and hand him a promotion.
Actually, we have one official promotion where I recognize two people that were promoted a short time ago. But like Carl Waldorf and Marty Blustine, both of these guys. Marty was promoted back in July to the rank of sergeant after Scott Williams retired. Marty's had, was hired by us in 2000. He has served in various capacities. He was a motorcycle officer, a juvenile officer, he was a school resource officer for Lake Forest High School. He also was on the Northern Illinois Police Alarm System as a sniper. He had been a detective. He was then an officer in charge, and then he was promoted to sergeant. So Marty's had a very well, full career in a short period of time, and we expect a lot more out of Marty. Congratulations, Marty. Carl Waldorf was just promoted from commander to the rank of deputy chief two weeks ago, roughly. He started in 1994 as an officer. He was an investigator. He was also a member of the Northern Illinois Police Alarm System, the Mobile Field Force. He was also a supervisor for that unit. He was an officer in charge, sergeant, and then commander. He has his degree in accounting and a master's in public administration. And more recently in May, when they had the NATO summit going on, Carl was our main point of contact for what we called our in-house response teams for the area in case there were any types of disruption that came there. He was supervisor of that unit too, so congratulations to Carl.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like Dwight Davis to come up, and has his wife Trina come in with him? Dwight is being promoted to the rank of sergeant. He was hired in 1995. He's one, he is our defensive tactics instructor. He also has done effective tactics and women's self-defense courses at Lake Forest College, and also members of the community, and also city employees. He was the Lake County Metropolitan Enforcement Group from 2005-2006. He also was a part of the Northern Illinois Police Alarm System for three years. He was assigned to Investigation and Duty only in May, and now we're kind of losing him back to patrol. He also has a bachelor's design from DeVry University, and he's married to his wife Trina here. So Trina's going to pin his star, and his chevron's on for him.
Our next item on the agenda this evening is the swearing in of two new police officers, Officer Rivera and Officer Jacob. And if you both come on up, I'm going to do this. This is the first time I know that I've done this, so bear with me. Please raise your right hand. Repeat it for me. I state your name.
I, Ms. Rivera.
I, Ms. Rivera.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Illinois.
And the ordinances of the city of Lake Forest.
And the ordinances of the city of Lake Forest.
And the rules and regulations of the Lake Forest Police Department.
And the rules and regulations of the Lake Forest Police Department.
And that I will, I will well and faithfully discharge the duties of the office of police officer.
And that I will well and faithfully.
It's a trick. The city of, the city of Lake Forest Police Department, to which I have been appointed.
To the city of Lake Forest Police Department, to which I have been appointed.
According to law and to the best of my ability.
According to law and the best of my ability.
You did it. Congratulations. You're going to make me do this twice now. Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Ms. Rivera.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Illinois.
And the ordinances of the city of Lake Forest.
And the ordinances.
Of the city of Lake Forest.
Of the city of Lake Forest.
And the rules and regulations of the Lake Forest Police Department.
And the rules and regulations of the Lake Forest Police Department.
And that I will, I'm going to remove the word "well" because it's too hard. And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of police officer.
And I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of police.
Of the office of police.
The city of Lake Forest Police Department, to which I have been appointed.
The city of Lake Forest, to which I have been appointed.
According to law and to the best of my ability.
According to law and the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Stress under fire.
Don't go far, you need some water.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry.
Pass that back.
Okay. I forgot, we do have one more. We have one more, which is a swearing in of firefighter paramedic Patrick Issel. Patrick, if you want to come on up.
Honorable Mayor and members of the council, just to give you a little tidbit of Patrick, most firefighters have to go through a twelve-month probationary period where they have to achieve certain certifications. We were very fortunate and blessed that Patrick came to us with those certifications. In addition to that, he's a fourth-generation firefighter. Great-grandfather was on Highland. His grandfather was the chief of Nolan. His father was the chief of Nolan. And his uncle is the deputy chief on Lake Forest. He comes to you with a lot of credentials, probably equivalent to a fifteen-year veteran, very sharp individual, and we're very fortunate to have.
I'm not sure who wrote the oath on this one, but it's a lot shorter. I don't see why it's, I don't want to say this, but it's easier to become a firefighter than that. I, Patrick Issel.
I, Patrick Issel.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Illinois.
And the ordinances, rules and regulations of the city of Lake Forest.
Ordnances, rules and regulations of the city of Lake Forest.
I will faithfully discharge the duties of the position of firefighter paramedic.
I will faithfully discharge the duties of firefighter paramedic.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I further swear to uphold the mission of the Lake Forest Fire Department.
I further swear to uphold the mission of the Lake Forest Fire Department.
And work to fulfill its vision to the best of my ability.
And work to fulfill its vision to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. We have one more appointment this evening, which is an appointment of Susie Colby to the Croya Board. And I'm not sure if Susie's here, but I entertain a motion for Susie's approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is approved. Welcome aboard, Susie. And I'll wait, I'll wait a minute until we clear out a little bit.
Got to reconvene, she's.
Yeah. Bears game, man. Multiple celebration.
It's actually a game I care about. If you can beat the Cowboys, it's a good amount of chance.
Yeah, there is.
That concludes my council's naming. Our next item on the agenda is comments by city manager, Bob.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, members of the council. Before that we get to the published agenda, there are two quick items I would mention. First, and this is near and dear to my heart, because it's near and dear to my home, is that Cherokee is going to be celebrating its 50th anniversary. And here to talk about this evening is Jeff Polker from the Parents' APT. So Jeff?
Good evening. Mr. Crowley said, my name is Jeff Polker. I'm here tonight representing the Cherokee Elementary School 50th Anniversary Committee.
Hi, my name's Desiree Whitty, and I'm the current APT president of the Cherokee Association of Parents and Teachers. On behalf of Cherokee APT, we are here tonight to invite the Lake Forest community, all of you here, the public in general, the former students, parents, staff and teachers in particular, to reception and open house celebrating the 50th anniversary of the dedication of Cherokee School. Cherokee first opened its doors to children of Lake Forest in September of 1962, and was officially dedicated on October 12 of that same year. Now, fifty years later, the Cherokee APT has picked the same date as a perfect time to celebrate Cherokee's golden anniversary.
On Friday, October 12, we will be hosting a community open house from 4:30 to 6:00 at Cherokee School. The current planned activities include guided tours of the school. We're going to have a history hallway where we'll have some printouts, pictures and memorabilia of events through Cherokee's storied past. We have a brief program scheduled with various guest speakers to provide their recollections of their time at Cherokee, as well as the history of the school. And we have an opportunity for attendees to contribute to a Cherokee memory book, as well as a video diary of the event. And of course, cake will be served. It is our hope that we'll be able to get a wide variety of former students, parents, faculty and staff to attend this event and use it as a way to reconnect, reminisce and help us recognize fifty wonderful years at Cherokee School. And please note that families and children of all ages, including those future Cheetahs, are all welcome. And I also wanted to mention that we have set up a Facebook page as a way for Cherokee alumni and friends to reconnect and share memories of their time at the school. So we involve, invite all you Facebookers out there to join our group. Just go onto Facebook and search Cherokee Elementary School's 50th Anniversary Page and request an invitation.
Over eighty-five percent of Cherokee families belong to and support the APT, and we have a wonderful board of dedicated parents who work diligently to bring events like this to Cherokee, to the Cherokee community. Apart from the 50th Anniversary Open House, the APT sponsors a back-to-school picnic for the kids to get to know each other and the parents to say hello once again in September. Our annual Halloween party, which we call Spook Fest in October, the kids have so much fun. The newest tradition is the Winter Fest, and the little ones dance, and it's just so cute. And that's in January. And of course, Field Day in May. We also coordinate a wide variety of activities and programs for the Cherokee students, including time zone, art appreciation, visiting author appearances, fine arts programs, children's publishing, yearbook and Celebration Book Club.
So I'd like to thank you for letting us have this opportunity to inform everyone of the Cherokee 50th Anniversary Open House on October 12. We hope to see as many people as possible at this event. It should be a lot of fun, and go Cheetahs. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jeff. Susan, can you switch over to the other item? The other matter I wanted to just mention, the city is very fortunate that Family Services of Lake County has worked with our Croya staff, Todd and Higgins and his staff, in bringing another youth and family counselor to Croya, starting very soon. We're making space available and individuals can sign up, families can sign up for this counseling service. And the service is being made available free of charge to the city of Lake Forest through the generosity of the Buchanan Fund. So we're very pleased about this. I think there's some additional backup material that's in front of you right now. And so we're very fortunate that Family Services has been able to reach out and provide us as badly needed services. You know, we've had some tragedies here over the last year, and any additional counseling or services that can be made available to our young adults and their families is very critical and very important. And then finally, Mr. Issel, can I ask you to go up to the podium for a moment? This past week, some of you may or may not know that here in Lake County, they had the first annual Bannockburn BBQ Challenge, and our very own fire department was our city's representative and came home with the gold. They won the overall award and are going to be recipients of the traveling trophy. But they also won the judges' award for the best pulled pork and the best brisket. And so Kevin, could you please let the council know, number one, who else was on your team? And number two, your secret recipe?
Yeah. Matt Goodman from ComDev, Chris Garrison, Deputy Fire Chief, Jeff Hall, Fire Chief, Scott Robertson, Battalion Chief, and my brother Mike, who was the father of Patrick that was here earlier. So it was a great group. We had a lot of fun. Matt Goodman is near-professional barbecue guy, so he has a special rub he does with mustard and all this stuff. But it was a lot of fun. Bob and I believe Mayor Cowie asked us about a month ago to represent the city, so we had a great time. It was a beautiful day on Saturday to be in Bannockburn, and we held Lake Forest proud, so it worked out very well.
Well, congratulations. Thank you for making us proud.
You're welcome.
So we want to know the next time they're going to cook for us now.
Well, that's right. I knew that was coming. When are you going to come cook for the council? Okay, now if I could ask Janice Hock from the Lake Forest Lake Bluff Historical Society to come forward and talk about some activities going on at the Historical Society.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm delighted to be here to share with you some of the wonderful activities that we have going on at the Historical Society this fall and winter. And I'm joined by our president, Rob Douglas, who's in the audience tonight. And before I start, I'd just like to tell you that if you were taking the oath of office in 1861, it would have been very different than what you presented tonight because there's...
Would it have been a lot easier?
No, it was much longer, and there's one sentence about upholding the U.S. Constitution, and then there's about seven or eight sentences about not fighting a duel. You're not even thinking about fighting a duel, that you've never fought a duel, you know, you're not even going to think about it in the future. So luckily somewhere along the line, someone rewrote the oath of office.
So we can do that, yeah.
So I wanted to come tonight to share with you some of our fall programs. And we are just thrilled again to present our annual fundraiser, Local Legends. And this year, we are honoring John Bryan. Many of you know him locally as the owner of Crabtree Farm. He's also been very involved with Rag Dale and involved in preservation of the 1830's Lake Forest cabin. But really, I mean, he is a legend. I will say that I've had the opportunity to interview him quite a bit lately in preparation for the program. And I think it's safe to say that any civic, cultural, any major civic and cultural activity in Chicago in the last twenty-five years was either spearheaded by Mr. Bryan or, you know, he was a significant part of. So he has some wonderful stories to tell. He's going to be interviewed by Bill Curtis. And it's coming up on Saturday, October 27, at 4:00 p.m. It's going to be at Lake Forest High School. And we've had a sellout crowd the last two years, so I'd like to encourage all of you to get your tickets early and come hear how the community is related to Richard Gere, among many of the anecdotal stories that we hope he's going to tell. And one of the preservation activities that Mr. Bryan chaired was the saving of the Farnsworth House, which is a Mies Van der Rohe House in Plano, Illinois. And in connection with our Local Legends event, we are also having a children's event celebrating the preservation of the Farnsworth House. We had this event last year when we honored Adrian Smith, and we had a hundred kids building the Burj Khalifa out of Legos. And lucky for us, there's a Lego kit of the Farnsworth House. So this is going to be held at the Gordon Community Center on the 20th of October, and the price includes a Lego kit. And we will, we're also inviting kids to bring their own design for a Lego house, and we'll have those on display. And the Lego designs are going to be judged by architect Larry Booth. So I hope that you can all bring your kids. It's going to be a fun activity. And last year, we had Adrian Smith signing, he came to the event and he was signing the models of the Burj Khalifa. And last year, we honored, as I mentioned, we honored Adrian Smith. And then the year before, in our first Local Legend event, we honored Captain Lovell. And these, as I mentioned, they were to sell out crowds, but we're lucky that Lake Forest TV is going to have some on-course showings of those programs this month. And so I encourage you to watch the schedule for Lake Forest TV. Just a few other fall programs. We're going to have a lecture and book signing on the history of Barra College. There's a brand-new book coming out. And I'm delighted to say that there's also a brand-new book coming out on West Lake Forest. It's going to be a book of photographs. It's been written by Susan Kelsey, Shirley Paddock and Art Miller. And the Historical Society is working with them to premiere the book, and so we will have a lecture and book signing for that. And then we're going to make a celebration of West Lake Forest the keynote for our programs in 2013. And if anyone in the community is interested in joining in that or has ideas for programs, we would love to hear about that. And in January, we are going to have a commemorative lecture on, it's going to be fifty years to the day that the North Shore interurban closed down. And ironically, that when it came to town, the franchise fee paid for the construction of City Hall here. So I guess we, you know, kind of come full circle. And another program that we have with Lake Forest College, we're doing oral histories of Cherokee school in celebration of the 50th anniversary of Cherokee. And then we're also, on this spring, we're going to do some oral histories for Everett's School in preparation for their 100th anniversary in 2014. And we are looking for some people to interview that can share their memories, so you can contact the Historical Society for that. And I'd like to also encourage everyone to become a member so that you can find out more about these programs and receive some member discounts and also first notice of our programs coming up. And I would just like to say that we have a brand-new website where you can purchase tickets for the events. And it premiered this spring. We won an award from the Illinois Association Museum. We won an award from the Illinois Association Museums. It has lots of information. And I just wanted to share as the final item, share one item that we've recently posted on the website here. Just to give you a little sample, we have lots of resources online, and one of the most recent ones we put together is a database of all of the city officials going back to the beginning of Lake Forest. And this was done in response to several genealogy requests that we had received. And working with the city staff, we realized there was a need for something that was searchable and very comprehensive. And so we went back to all of the city council minutes and looking at the Lake Forester and put a very comprehensive database back of your forefathers. So I hope that you'll visit our website and use many of the resources that we have. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Jeff, very much. What happened to that city manager in those early years?
You'll have to visit the website to find out.
I've just given you a hard time. I knew that. That completes my report this evening.
Thank you, Bob. Our next item on the agenda this evening is comments by council members. Any comments? No, we'll move on to the next item, which is items for the omnibus vote consideration. There are eight items. I will read each for the record, and then you may take one or all as you so desire. The first is an approval of resolution replacing Glenn Burmicer with Scott Robertson for the city's Irma Board Representative. The second is an award of a bid for the public safety building generator replacement and the recreation center new generator installation. The third is the consideration of ordinances approving recommendations from the Historic Preservation Commission. This is a first reading and, if desired, final approval. The fourth is a consideration of ordinance approving a recommendation from the Zoning Board of Appeals. Again, it's a first reading and, if desired, final approval. The fifth is a consideration of ordinances approving recommendations from the Building Review Board. Again, first reading and, if desired, by the council, final approval. The sixth is award of bids for both a fairway and bank mower for the golf course maintenance section included in the fiscal year 2013 capital equipment budget. The seventh is the check register for period August 25 to September 24, 2012. And the eighth is approval of the September 17, 2012 Regular City Council Minutes. Any questions or comments by the council? If not, that entertain a motion for approval.
Move to approve the omnibus stuff. Waiting for a reading? It'll be first reading. Unless we break those out, those will just be approved for the first readings.
Vic, can we, can we do it one, at one time?
Your motion can include, sorry, your motion can include the waiver of first reading. It will require a vote of six of you to accomplish that. So it can be a motion to take it, including both first and final.
So moved.
Second.
We need a roll call vote on that first.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Pandalian.
Aye.
Alderman Schoenhyder.
Aye.
Alderman Tac.
Aye.
Alderman Palmer.
Aye.
Alderman Adaman.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you, Bertie. Then I entertain a motion if you wish to take it for final approval.
That was included as a motion.
We're good. Okay, we're good. Very good. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda, therefore, is ordinances. The first being a consideration of ordinance granting a special use permit, approving the Northwestern Lake Forest Hospital campus master plan, and establishing conditions of approval. This is for final approval this evening, presented by Community Development Captain Sernia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. At your last meeting, you continued this matter. You had only received the revised ordinance just a few days before that meeting. Previous to that, in June of this year, you did grant first reading to an ordinance, and that ordinance really was the skeleton ordinance and listed, I believe, the 24 conditions of approval that were forwarded to you from the Plan Commission. Since the last meeting, we've received questions from a number of you, requests for clarification. We're going to try fairly briefly to review those, but we do want to acknowledge the time that you all have spent in reviewing that lengthy document. Before we get into that, I just want to take just a couple seconds just to go back. It's been more than a year when public meetings started on, started to review the requests for approval of a new, a master plan for the new Northwestern Lake Forest Hospital Campus. The Plan Commission considered this matter for eight months, starting with an initial meeting, an informational meeting in September of last year. At the information meeting, they received an introduction, received a lot of information, and really established some parameters of what they would be looking for as this plan came forward. The plan went back to the commission in December, and then three additional times as we moved into this year. The Plan Commission, at each of those meetings, I believe, at least at every meeting, it was a two-and-a-half, three-hour meeting, and there were some meetings that were longer than that. They asked lots of questions. They challenged staff. They challenged the hospital team. The plan changed significantly during that time. The Plan Commission focused on many items, and I won't review that, I presented that in June, but I just wanted to remind you that, that we're not, although this, this will be a very long process as the campus builds out, we are not at the very beginning of the process. There's a lot more to come, but a whole lot of work has been done over the last year. So in summary fashion, I'd like to respond to the questions and requests for clarifications that were received from you. And when I get to the really hard questions, I'm going to turn them over to the city attorney. First of all, I do want to point out, I think the deputy city clerk has provided you with a copy of three pages that we just did language clarifications on. I believe those pages are five, six, and nine in your packet, and I didn't intend to review those. Those were suggestions we received from some of you that really helped to clarify that language and didn't change the intent. The questions, I categorized the questions we received into three areas: traffic-related, site design-related, and then a section on process as well. And without reiterating each of your questions, I'm going to try and provide the answers concisely. Traffic-related, and I'm going to switch the order. I'm going to talk first about the adequacy of improvements to allow the first phase of the project to move forward. The Plan Commission, as the council has, has spent a lot of time on traffic. And the Plan Commission felt very strongly that, at the outset of this project, traffic, certain road improvements were required. In fact, in staff's very early meeting with the hospital, we talked about the connection to Route 41 being really an essential component, a fundamental piece of this project. And in response to that, the hospital very quickly moved forward to work with IDOT and pulled in Senator Susan Garrett to make sure that at the front end of that project, of this project, that the right-in, right-out connection to Route 41 was something that was moving forward. Work is continuing with, with IDOT. I received a, a seminal from the hospital just last week indicating that there is more communication with IDOT going on. So the Plan Commission felt very strongly that the improvements planned for Route 41, for West Moreland and Deer Path, and for Waukegan Road were in fact adequate, will be adequate, to provide the necessary service to Phase One of this project. The city engineer was very involved in reviewing the traffic studies. He challenged the first phases of the traffic study, asked for additional information, asked for additional studies, clearly pointed out that peak times in Lake Forest don't necessarily correlate with peak times in other communities, and assured that those, the traffic volume counts were taken at the appropriate time. To be further certain that those traffic studies were thorough and were appropriately completed, the city, at the hospital's expense, did bring in a third-party engineer to review those traffic studies as well. And the, the findings of our city engineer were confirmed, that those traffic studies were, were complete and thorough. The ordinance does provide for the city to request future traffic studies. After the completion of Phase One of this project, which is construction of the replacement hospital and a medical office building and some other components on the center campus, there is a requirement for a traffic study to be done once the Phase One project is occupied. And that is really to allow us to be certain that the traffic projections and the, and the proposed routes are really being followed. That does provide the city with the opportunity, if what, what is occurring is not consistent with what was projected, to make changes. The Plan Commission talked about the potential for relooking at West Moreland, if needed, if need be in the future, to consider various possibilities, such as making West Moreland one-way, closing Chiltern, requiring carpooling, shuttle service. So there certainly is an opportunity going forward to verify that what has been projected, what has been predicted, is in fact occurring. In addition, as part of this approval, the hospital is being required to do an intersection design study for Route 41 and Deer Path. That is a necessary first step in talking with IDOT about really focusing on a future for Route 41. There were questions about whether the, how the cost of that study was determined. Again, the, the proposal for that study was submitted to the city engineer. He reviewed the scope of work presented, asked for some additions, and the dollar amount that is in, in the ordinance, I believe, is the cost proposed plus 10%. So that was reviewed. I hit on this, but, but the what-if component here really had to do with the fact that the city is not giving anything away. If there are traffic problems, not only will the city be able to work with the hospital to resolve those, but it also is in the hospital's best interest. They need people to be able to arrive at the hospital without being slowed down. Moving into site design-related issues, questions that were raised, I, I want to start by reiterating that the Plan Commission spent a great deal of time looking at the site, the site design aspects of this plan. And they really tried to strike the right balance between leaving it too wide open and moving too far and really restricting creativity and the opportunity to really achieve a spectacular The ordinance specifically states a preference for structured parking, but does not go as far as stating a limitation on the square footage for surface parking. The Plan Commission talked about parking a lot and really felt that the idea of identifying areas for parking, stating a preference for surface parking, that those were strong enough parameters to allow the design process to unfold. Wetland mitigation, the language in the ordinance does reflect the language that is currently in the code and currently used by the Plan Commission for all developments. The city's first preference has always been to preserve wetlands. If they are low quality, if they are isolated, the city has in the past allowed wetlands to be mitigated. The next preference is that that mitigation occurs on-site. If that is not possible, that the mitigation occurs off-site in the Lake Forest watershed, and if that is not possible, then mitigation in another watershed is permitted. The detailed review process ensures that the city plays a key role in making that decision of what is appropriate. So the ordinance does address that and really is consistent with how other developments are proposed. The ordinance also speaks to streetscape treatment as well as perimeter treatment. With respect to Waukegan Road, unlike the area immediately adjacent to Lane Lorraine, the ordinance allows for more flexibility. The ordinance speaks to consideration of using a combination of, of buffering techniques, yet to be determined, which could include landscaping, water features, some birmingham, perhaps some fencing, but it doesn't require that landscaping to occur at the front end of the project. It allows that streetscape treatment to really be defined through the design development process. And importantly, the, the Plan Commission saw this as an opportunity to really create a park-like campus that may in fact benefit, the community may benefit, and the streetscape may benefit, from views into that site rather than walling it off, as has occurred with some of our developments on Route 60. So not an intent to, to leave it wide open, but to ensure that there's parameters in place that give direction as the, the design development process moves on. The building height issue is one that the Plan Commission spent a great deal of time on. The height limitations provided both in the master plan and in the ordinance set height ranges for each area of the campus. In all instances, the height established includes the mechanicals. In the very center area where the height, the greatest height is permitted, there is an allowance at the city's discretion to allow mechanicals to exceed the maximum height of 81 feet, if there's a demonstrated need and if it makes sense with the overall plan. So there are very specific parameters, but, but again, they don't try and put this development in a box that doesn't allow for the development design process to proceed. And finally, process-related, the ordinance does provide a detailed process for moving forward. Your approval of the master plan is not the end of the city's involvement, not the end of the Plan Commission's involvement, and not the end of the council's involvement. The Plan Commission really struggled, especially as they got into their third or fourth meeting, with the idea of, of bringing the Building Review Board into this process, because the Plan Commission had, had spent already a number of months getting up to speed. They also recognized that the Building Review Board really doesn't handle projects of this scope, and that perhaps a, a better way to move forward with this is to appoint an advisory group, much as we did with the city's water treatment plant project. So that, the establishment of that group was really based on that project, which worked very successfully. The advisory group would report to the city manager and would be, be involved in the design development process. The ordinance also includes, includes areas of expertise that should be incorporated, that should be held by the individuals who make up that advisory group. I think the Plan Commission's expectation is that that advisory group would in fact be a stronger body and, and really more focused on this particular project than the Building Review Board would. That advisory committee would help shape, shape the staff report that would eventually be part of the presentation of detailed plans for each phase or sub-phase to the Plan Commission, and the Plan Commission's recommendation would then be forwarded to the city council. So it actually is a very strong process. It's a process that keeps the city very involved. And importantly, it's, it's a process that doesn't let the hospital go away and spend the next eight months, nine months, 12 months doing design development, but requires that the city remain involved in that process. I'm going to ask the city attorney to respond to the next three items.
With respect to fees, the ordinance does require that the hospital pay all the customary and standard fees. There is recognition that the, the hospital can petition the city council to either reduce or waive fees. That's always going to be considered by the council as part of a detailed plan approval. An example of when that might be an appropriate adjustment to make would be, for example, a, an element of the, the hospital plan that might include some kind of community cooling center or something like that, where it has a clear benefit to the community, there might be some consideration given. That's something that's always going to come back to the council for final determination. There's no requirement to have any kind of adjustment, but there is recognition that it might be appropriate under appropriate circumstances. With respect to assurances of completion, again, all of the standard ordinances apply. If there are any kind of public improvements, again, our ordinances provide for surety bonds to make sure that the, the work is performed and completed in accordance with our codes. There is recognition, again, that there may be circumstances that would allow for some adjustment in the appropriate security, but that's something that the council will determine with each phase of the, of the plan. I should note that, just like any other private development, there is not a specific completion bond required to do the private improvements. That's something that is always going to be for the private owner to do. We always have our tools for that. If something's not completed, there are legal mechanisms to make that happen. As far as... As far as timing of the completion of projects, while we don't have any prescribed time period within the code or within the, I'm sorry, within the special use permit, we do recognize that in connection with each detailed plan, if there is a time period to be established, it can be done at that time. But again, as Kathy mentioned, the detailed plan is the mechanism to actually implement the different phases of the master plan, and they will be coming to you in discreet fights as the hospital proposes them. What if? I suppose what if is a lot of things, but one of the things that I think what if really turns on is what if Lake Forest, Northwestern Lake Forest Hospital no longer wants to pursue this project and instead transfers this or wants to hand it off to another hospital organization? Although under Illinois law, we're not able to judge whether one hospital organization is better or worse than another. That's something that the state handles within its discretion. We do have both the master plan and our ordinances to set the standards for when and how the work is going to be conducted from a land use perspective. We also have, in the ordinance, a protection against having the hospital transfer this to an entity that's not capable of doing it. We do require the hospital to remain fully obligated under this special use permit for any work that's to be undertaken unless there is a financially viable transferee that has signed an agreement that will make them undertake those obligations and assume those obligations and that the city has signed off on. So we do have the protections that we can exercise within the scope of our power to the extent that there is a change in who's going to proceed with this program. So I think with that, I'm going to finish unless there are other questions. Or if you want me to give you a real exhaustive review of the ordinance like I did last.
And I would just conclude. If the council chooses to do so, you already have granted first reading. It'll be appropriate to grant final approval. You do have before you a strong recommendation in support of the 41-page master plan in addition to the ordinance from the Plan Commission. I would be happy to answer any questions.
I have one question. Kathy, when you say that the follow-up studies on the traffic would come back, you know, there'd be follow-up studies based on the traffic concerns, do those come back to Plan Commission, city council, or just city staff?
The follow-up study after the completion of Phase One would be required as part of the presentation of the detailed plan for Phase Two to the Plan Commission. So yes, the Plan Commission would have that information, would base their decision on that information, and it would be forwarded to the city council in summary form.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. On page six, Section C, Sub 2, Route 41 Access. And before I get that, let me just say, this is a great document. I appreciate all the time. I know that you personally have put in on it, and I commend the entire process that got us here this evening to consider the special use permit. Plan Commission did a yeoman job. I love the advisory committee that's been integrated into the process. I'm perfectly content with the entirety of the special use permit with one exception, and that's Section 3C-2 on the Route 41 Access. The last three lines provide wiggle room, meaning that we can waive, either the city manager can waive or city council can waive the requirement to have that Route 41 entrance-exit done by the time we grant building permits. And I don't think it's necessary. I've driven from Lake Cook up to Route 137 repeatedly studying all the intersections. Specifically Imperial Motors, the old Saab Exchange now, the Chevy Exchange, they both have in-outs. There's no reason by the time building permits will be issued, which I'm guessing are 18 to 24 months from now with all the planning that first has to be done, there's no reason why that shouldn't be done and we have to have this wiggle room provision in here. I think it should be a condition precedent to issuing a building permit that the southbound on-off ramps are done for construction purposes, so they're not coming in Westmoreland, so they're not coming in off of Waukegan Road onto Westmoreland. And then further, and I know I'm the only one who keeps harping on this point, I'd like to see the new access at 41 be a four-way interchange with a traffic light and a median cut as a condition proceeding to issuing an occupancy permit to the new hospital, which I suspect is three to four years down the road. Gives us ample time to lean on IDOT to do that. That's my only objection. It's my sole objection is the potential traffic problems that will be created at Westmoreland and Deer Path and Chiltern. And we all know that we have a pretty terrible situation at 41 and Deer Path at that underpass, which is there's going to be no easy resolution of it. And for me, the easiest resolution is a four-way interchange at 41 and a new gateway coming in from the northeast quadrant of the hospital property. Other than that, I think everybody's done a great job.
I could just offer a couple comments. It certainly is the council's option to remove that flexibility with respect to issuing building permits before the write-in, write-out is completed. However, with the commitment we've received from IDOT and with the steady progress that the hospital is making, I believe that all of us are very confident that that write-in, write-out should be completed well before the issuance of permits. I think that language was put in there just as a what-if, but that's certainly your option. With respect to the Route 41 and making that write-in, write-out, something more, even before Northwestern was involved with Lake Forest Hospital, we were having discussions with IDOT about a write-in, write-out at that location. And it took some real muscle to get IDOT to be in a position where they were supportive of the write-in, write-out. Senator Garrett certainly played a very strong role in that. Our understanding is that IDOT really, when push comes to shove, they want to look at that whole stretch of Route 41. They really want the right solution, and it's not going to be soon, and it's going to be something very separate from the hospital project. But this ordinance does require the hospital to take that first step and do that intersection design study.
If I may offer two other supplemental comments. One, some of the properties that you identified, Alderman, that have gotten the write-in, write-out have a sole access on 41. The hospital is not one of those properties, and that actually does make a difference from the way IDOT issues permits. So I don't think it's as much as a given as it might seem when driving up and down 41.
I don't think that's correct. I think both Imperial Motors and Old Saab Exchange have access from Waukegan Road. I know they do.
I may be wrong about that. Some of them had pre-established access points, and if they were pre-established, again, that's a different issue. The other point I was going to note is that before any permits are going to be issued, the detailed plan has to come forward. So the council will actually have a very clear idea at the time of the detailed plan approval whether or not the intersection or the write-in, write-out has been approved and is in place, and if it hasn't been, you can make your call at that point whether or not you can. I think that the language was inserted in this particular section merely as a recognition that not everything always falls into place exactly as and when desired from a timing perspective, and a recognition that the council at least will have an open ear to those circumstances if and when the time appears. Council's not obligated to waive that, and that's something that you can call out prior to any final detailed plan approval. And although it does provide for the manager to give some kind of consideration to that, I believe that the council can, as part of the detailed plan approval, also direct the manager, if you so choose, not to give that kind of relief if that's warranted. So I think having the flexibility doesn't in any way limit the city council's ultimate authority over this. I think it is something that does at least offer a recognition of the uncertainty of future events.
Any other questions or comments for Kathy or Vic from the council?
No, just very quick comment. Again, recognition that the Plan Commission has spent many hours, many meetings on this and reviewing their findings. In honesty, there were questions I had, a lot of my questions were answered by reviewing what they already vetted, so I don't want to re-go over what they've already established in respect to their findings. They're there. It's well thought out. I appreciate Mike's concerns, and on a wish list level, the idea of having an interchange on Route 41 at that location would be wonderful, and I think we should do everything to work towards that goal. However, I don't want a precondition approval of this on establishing a four-way intersection there or having in place the turnoff on Route 41. The timing of this project, I think, is essential to get this approved. At this point, there'll be further vetting of these issues in the future. We need to move on to allow Phase One of this project to go ahead at this point. So I strongly urge everyone to approve at this point with no conditions put on for traffic on 41, beyond what's in.
I'd like to echo Kent's comments. There's a well-worn saying in the real estate business that time kills all deals, and I think it would be an absolute travesty if, because of well-intentioned efforts to protect the city from some aspect of the plan, the whole thing went away. And that can happen. That happens all the time. So.
I'd just also like to reiterate Alderman Alderman's concerns on traffic. Those are all, most of my questions were related to traffic. And the questions that we had sent in to be answered prior to the meeting, I'm completely satisfied that we've got enough oversight going forward where we have control over potential miscalculations that would need to be corrected and that those corrections would be in the mutual interest of the hospital and the city. So I'm, agree with everything Alderman Alderman said, and I think it's taken care of.
If I could, Maricalla, you know, it's been echoed several times that staff, Kathy, Vic, and the Plan Commission spent an enormous amount of time on this and I think came out with an extraordinary work product, and we have them to thank. But I want to thank the hospital and their team. I want to thank Tom and his team and his staff. You've been incredibly patient as well while we have gone through the process. Others may not have been. You've got a huge investment, but you've also got a huge commitment to our community, and we appreciate that. And we appreciate you working with us and being patient and developing what we think was a better end product than when we started. So thank you for that time. Thank you for that commitment. We are very excited about moving forward.
Any other comments from council? No, I know Tom McAfee is here. Tom, do you want to make any comments just before final consideration here at the council level?
I just would like to say thank you. I'd like to thank you for your patience and your participation in this process. I do believe that we've struck the right balance. We recognize how big of a project this is to the community, but I think that we hold that confidence close. We've been around for 110 years. I can assure you that from my perspective, there is probably no bigger decision to help advance the health of our community for our residents. And I think that when we reflect back on this decision to move forward this project, it'll be viewed as a watershed moment to really elevate the quality of care. We need to deliver a better facility to support our physicians and our patients. And finally, I just would also like to recognize the Plan Commission for their enormous work and Kathy, Vic, and Bob and your teams. Thank you. I do believe this is a wonderful ordinance that will help all of us. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. If there are no other comments, I'd entertain a motion for approval. Now, let that be Alderman Palmer. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman O'Veon.
Aye.
Alderman Moore.
Aye.
Alderman Nann.
Aye.
Alderman Tapp.
I'll abstain.
Palmer.
Aye.
Alderman Abrams.
Nay.
Alderman Tapp has a no.
Abstain.
Abstain.
Seven, eight, no, eight motion carries.
Thank you, Birdie.
It wasn't, it wasn't.
Six, one, and one extension. Is that right?
We had one nay.
Yeah, who was the no, the nay?
That's Alderman Alderman.
Alderman Alderman. Thank you.
And I know Alderman, and you are the one outstanding nay. I'm just curious as to your concerns in that regard?
First of all, you guys made it easy for me to say nay because you approved it. And you know I wish nothing but the best of success to the hospital, but my sole objective in opposing this is to bring the spotlight on the traffic issue. And if I can underscore that and bring this council's attention to that issue and the community's attention to that issue and the hospital's attention to that issue, maybe we can move it forward successfully with IDOT over the next three, four years. So that's my sole purpose in voting no, is to underscore that intersection at 41 and a new gateway to the hospital.
And agreed. I'm behind Mike entirely on that we do everything necessary to push for that intersection at 41. I don't want to precondition the project approval on it, but I think we should make all-out effort for that. Again, thank you, Tom, and your staff, and we look forward to working with you on the next piece of process. I know you have a long way to go with the other approvals, but it's a major step tonight, and we look forward to, again, furthering this to fruition and completion. So thanks again. Our next item on the agenda is new business. One only, as consideration of ordinance approving Phase One of the new campus master plan for Woodlands Academy of the Sacred Heart. This is, if desired by the council, we may waive first reading and grant final approval. And I believe Kathy Cerniak is going to present as well.
You've also seen this one before. This is a recommendation from the Plan Commission, a unanimous recommendation from the Plan Commission to approve the Phase One master plan for Woodlands Academy of the Sacred Heart. Although this petition is before you for the first time, many of you have a lot of history with the Barra property, going back as far as 10 years or more. Just to step back for a moment, about, just a little over a year ago, the community was made aware of the opportunity for a very generous gift to Woodlands Academy through the purchase by a donor of the 23-acre Barra property. Part of that was the need for the community to have the discussion about whether or not Old Main should be demolished. Earlier this year, the council did take action in support of the demolition of Old Main, subject to numerous conditions of approval, and also approved a special use permit allowing the incorporation of the Barra campus into Woodlands Academy. Today, this exists, although still in two ownerships, it exists as approximately 40-acre Woodlands Academy campus. As required by the special use permit that the council approved, in order to do anything, any improvements other than some very limited activities on the Barra campus property, Woodlands needed to come forward with a master plan. It was discussed at length at that time. It was acknowledged that in order to demolish Old Main, a first step was to find a replacement for the antennas located on the top of Old Main. So this master plan comes before you and only addresses one part of what's going to happen to this campus in the future, but the first and a very important part. The master plan that's presented to you goes no further than identifying the location of, for a new monopole and the associated utility route and the associated temporary access easement. access easement. This master plan that's presented does not yet contemplate or request approval for any fields, any buildings, and any structures. So, this is really the first step. If the council chooses to move forward and approve the cell tower site, AT&amp;T would move forward through the normal city process. The site that has been chosen for the new cell tower is one of the sites that's already identified in the city code as a permitted location for a cell tower. And in that same section of the code, there are numerous requirements that city staff would need to go through, review requirements, prior to issuing a permit for this. And those requirements deal with landscaping and structural reports and all sorts of analysis. The timing of this is important, because once this site, this location is approved, AT&amp;T will need to go through its process with the FCC. That process will take a number of months, but as soon as those approvals are given, are granted, are obtained, then Woodlands Academy will proceed with the demolition of Old Main, which at this time is something that we are receiving more calls about, simply due to the condition. The plant commission, approximately two years ago, discussed the concept of replacing those antennas. And at that time, the approved plan, still in place, called for this area to be redeveloped for residential. At that time, Barra Woods, the Barra Woods plan had been approved. So, the plant commission considered at that time, if there was to be residential development very close in this area, that this may not be an appropriate location for a tower. However, with the incorporation of all this into the campus, this location really is, works very well. I do want to acknowledge that David Moore chairs the Wireless Communications Task Force, and the task force did submit a letter, which I believe in your packet, is included in your packet. If, I want to make one other point, that in addition to replacing the coverage provided by the antennas on Old Main, a very important point that was acknowledged by the Wireless Task Force and by the plant commission, is that green is a good color. I'll just do this very simply. Green is a good color. This is the eastern part of Lake Forest. This is the current coverage. Green areas are good coverage. With this proposed tower, not only will the coverage be replaced, but simply because of the location, the updated technology, significant improved coverage in East Lake Forest is predicted with this location. The cell tower is proposed at 110 feet, which is what is permitted by the code. If you choose to do so, you do have a unanimous recommendation before you from the plant commission. Be appropriate to waive first reading and grant final approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Kathy? And I would like to also recognize Alderman Moore for his hard work on the Wireless Task Force and the great job that they did reviewing all the options and coming up with a good solution. So, I thank you for all your work.
Kathy, I have a comment and a couple small questions. And my comment is, as I remember from my time on plant commission, this issue first coming up several years ago, and at that time, we were examining various city-owned sites, and I have to say that at one time, I was very strongly in favor of that ComEd substation site that we were talking about, and I've done a complete reversal on that. I think that this is a much, much better alternative, which for obvious reasons, we didn't look at then, and I think this is the best possible site. Nobody loves cell phone towers. None of us really, really like them, but we need to have one, and it's time to act. My questions are this. I remember that there were actually a number of conditions that needed to be met before we could move forward with the demolition of Old Main, and that this cell tower relocation was key. And I'm just curious where we are with those other, with those other issues.
The cell tower issue is what's holding up the demolition. Woodlands is making, has worked very hard on the asbestos study, utility disconnects. We're working with them on all of those issues, and at the point when FCC approves this site, and this site is installed, the demolition of the building will follow immediately. And we predict sometime next spring. Is that reasonable? Spring to summer? So, yes, all the other conditions that needed to occur to a large demolition have either been completed or are close to being completed.
And my second question is this, and I'm just curious. You spoke about the Barra Woods development, and I'm assuming that this cell tower will necessitate the removal of some trees. It's in a wooded area. And I was just curious, back when we were talking about Barra Woods and that development, was this an area that was going to be cleared had that development occurred anyways?
And this is an air photo, so it doesn't show the property line, so I'm going to kind of guess. This area is city-owned. It's the South Park Woods. This cell tower and the base area that will support it are not on city property, and they are set back a significant distance. But this area, the very area where the cell tower would be located, was actually planned for development with homes and roads. The Barra Woods development actually encroached just a little bit and required some tree removal. The trees that will be removed are all, every one of them is a low-quality tree. The cell, the base of the cell site is, I believe, about 60 feet by 45 feet. No significant trees, and there's a significant buffer that will remain. The highest quality part of our South Park Woods is actually in this area, which is a wetland that we have discussed at the staff level of really working with open lands to really enhance, for enhancing, just simply clean up that South Park Woods area, because we do know that that's, it's important to this neighborhood, it's important to the park, and really, the location of this tower is a good one because of the South Park Woods. Thanks.
I just have one specific technical question. I assume that that utility, the path of those utilities on the earlier diagram, that that's underground, not above ground?
Yes.
Okay. That's it.
I'd just like to thank the two members at large, and the two, Mike Williams and Richard Steck, and Jim Karas, and Augie...
Help me with this last name.
Zigarelli.
Zigarelli, thank you. I think we did a, we really vetted everything. We know so much about cell towers right now, it's ridiculous. We've looked at DAS, we've looked at different kinds of towers and different kinds of systems, and looked into the future, and looked in the past, and I think we've taken anybody that was, had any opinion or knowledge of cell towers, and we're all in agreement now. There's a unanimous group regarding this tower in particular, that we're doing the right thing. And I'd like to thank Ralph and his team, and very cooperative, and things are, things look good. I think we've come up with a great solution, specifically relating to the South Park Woods. I think it's important to remember that was a gift from Woodlands Academy to the city, and this is on the edge of a field that's already established. It's also important, I think it might have been put in the letter, that we did put up 110-foot fire ladder. We looked at it from miles away and yards away, and this is a, it'll be practically invisible. Yes, if you stand in exactly the right spot, you can certainly see it from certain locations, but anybody walking or playing or driving will never even know it's there. In fact, I challenge anybody to name the sites of four other, of our 30-some cell towers in Lake Forest, not including the water tower. So, I think it, I think it worked out well, and I think we're, we had a win-win-win-win. So, I'm happy with this.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I'd entertain a motion for approval.
Motion to waive first reading and grant final approval.
Second.
Roll call, vote please.
Alderman Novick?
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck?
Aye.
Alderman Moore?
Aye.
Alderman Panleon?
Aye.
Alderman Schoenhyer?
Aye.
Alderman Tac?
Aye.
Alderman Palmer?
Aye.
Alderman Alderman?
Aye.
Eight yeas, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you, Birdy. Our next item on the agenda this evening is additional items for council discussion. Any other items this evening? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Leading is adjourned. Thank you. Right on schedule.